Good morning. It is nine AM and I will call to order the February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Sling County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Mr. Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Yeah.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, if everyone can make sure that their all microphones and phones and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly. I would appreciate it. Now Brad, our IT director could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand during the meeting. Brad?
Good morning. Assuming that, assuming that most participants in the meeting are using the Zoom client, when you select the participants icon at the bottom of the screen, at the, in the lower right-hand corner of the screen, that will display a raise hand function. If you select that and raise your hand, that will indicate to the host that you would like to speak. Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. And at this time, I'd like to call on Phil Smith Haynes, our county administrator. He has a little information on the blackouts here in the county.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Yes, we have been advised this morning that Evergy will be continuing with rolling blackouts to deal with the electric situation that's been generated by the cold snap. If that happens and we lose the ability to Zoom this meeting, the meeting will end, for lack of a quorum, and then we will attempt to reschedule the balance of the agenda for later in this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. And thank you, Brad, and for your information there on the tuning in here. At this time, we will move into our citizens input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and pertaining to items not on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the commission at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a hand raised. I will ask Jessica to unmute and speak to the commission.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sean Kendall-Sparger and this is my wife Jessica. And we're on here this morning to try to get, have you guys reconsidered the location of one of the communication towers? The county is putting up for a new communication system that is located right adjacent to our piece of land just south of Brookville. I'd emailed everybody a letter last week. I'm not sure if you got it. I think it was Friday, late Friday afternoon when I got it out, kind of giving a rundown of the situation.
Yes. And, and, and for people's information, and I've got a, a call friend. I talked to Jessica quite a while back and, and anyway, and talked to the people here in regards to why, what, where. And I understand, and I drove out there that same afternoon. I got off the phone and see, and my, my first concern was is that, hey, with all the engineering that's went into this project, is it really, first off, one of the top priorities of places to install the tower and for the, just the benefit of the whole county and all the nine-one-one and everything else that's going on here? And to, and so that was the, the issue there. That was like, my, our first concern was, is this a priority place? But yes. So anyway, but go ahead with your, your information that you'd like to discuss.
Okay. Well, we are, we're concerned about our property value there.
I have several leading experts that are willing to not only come forth but have put together letters. The impact of that on the value of our home, looking at twenty to twenty-five percent, our most recent appraisal came in at about seven eighty. So we're looking at several hundred thousand dollars in, in detriment to us and the lack of value with that, that particular type of client that's looking for a home of that nature. I mean, had we known this in advance, we probably never would have built right there, especially a home of that nature.
And if, if everybody's not aware, this is approximately just a little under six hundred feet from our house where this tower is going.
I mean, we would, we would openly invite you to come out, just if you wanted to decide for yourself. It is right. It is not far outside our bedroom window, of which we've built a large deck that overlooks the views of that side of the hill. The, the tower will be seen from inside our home. It will obviously be seen immediately coming down our drive. It, it's a big impact to us, a big impact. And we were more than willing to, and had offered in a meeting several other locations, I mean, within reasonable, you know, similar elevations, similar access on other parts of our ground that wouldn't be such an impact to our property value in particular, something out of sight, not right outside our work.
And, and looking through all the, the ordinances that affect towers in Sling County, on this little tiny narrow piece of land, almost all of them go against putting a three-hundred-foot tower on. Location within a half mile of any residential area, being the city of Brookville is two thousand to the first house in Brookville, it's a little over twenty-one hundred feet, so less than a half a mile. Six hundred feet from our house, approximately six hundred feet from our other house to the south that we own, and our neighbor to the northeast of us, it's approximately a thousand feet from his house. So there's a lot of, it's not just our house, it's going to affect several other properties, one of which we own and, you know, a couple of which. The ordinances, almost all, almost every one of them are stacked against this piece of land. Really, the only thing I, the only advantage I see to the county is the fact that they own the land. And if you know the history about this, we, when we purchased this place, we thought this was part of our land. Our driveway was approved to go across it and everything. We got a permit to build. I don't even think the county knew that you guys owned it until a couple of years after we, after we dropped permit and moved and built a house.
Yes. And, and I know at this point in time right now that, that there is, it's still under discussion and, and, and I know that our, our attorney has, has looked at it and then looking at different options and we're looking at different sites and different ways to go at other costs involved to the county. So I know at this time, it's still, it's not a, it's not a, hey, here, it's cut and dry type of thing. I think it's still in discussion of where, what, and when.
Okay.
So I, I would, at this point in time right now, I would just sit back and say, let's, let's wait till all the bells and whistles are cleared to see where and what that's happened here. So, and I have not discussed it with our county attorney or anything. So I, and, or even here. So it's like, it's been a while. So it's, it's been discussed.
We, we actually did, our attorney that we've been working with did receive correspondence from the county attorney stating that you were moving forward and offering us twenty-five hundred dollars in compensation to do so. And that our, our driveway was in violation and that we were trespassing. It was very, very openly stated. It wasn't like a kind of, we have, we have documentation of the approved driveway when we, I mean, when we built the driveway. He, he also proceeded to state that twenty-five hundred dollars was more than enough compensation considering we were in Brookville County and that, that that would not be a value any higher than that.
And I, I'm not pertinent to that information right at this time, so I, I don't have any clue what we're discussing here. So.
Will, will the county, is the county going to get ahold of us before they proceed? This was just last week when we got this letter that said that the county was proceeding with this and, and I assume this will have to have a conditional use permit for it because of, because it doesn't meet any of the requirements for that piece of land. And I don't believe any, anybody that, any of our neighbors, adjacent landowners to this have even been notified of this. None of them even knew anything about it until we told them about.
Okay. What I would say at this time, and I know we're getting past this three minutes, but it's like, what I would say right now is that when we get done with this meeting and I'll get with Hannah Stanball and Phil Smith Haynes and our administrator and find out kind of where we're at and located and we'll be getting in touch with you. I'm sure that they will be getting in touch with you because this has been an ongoing situation.
Sure, sure.
But thank you for your bringing that to our attention again.
All right. Thank you for your time, Smore.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. It goes back a couple, three or four years, but was that land offered to the Kendall-Spargers for, to purchase at one time? Does anyone know the answer to that question?
We received a letter from the county attorney offering for purchase. We responded back and said, yes, we were interested. Please let us know what you wanted for that. He had stated that if he had it his way, we'd just need the property back over at no fee, but that it needed to be discussed with all of you. And then that was the last we heard of it.
Do you, do you recall how long ago that was?
I have the letter, actually.
The first letter I got from, or the only letter I got from him was March sixteenth of twenty eighteen.
Okay, thank you.
And that was one stating that they were interested in selling to us. And then I had contacted him and he'd said back with you, and I never heard anything back and it.
Fell to the wayside.
And at that time, you did say that you were interested in purchasing the, the property?
Very much so. At the time fenced, we were grazing it. We, we just pulled cattle this, this fall. Yeah, we, we had been grazing it. It had been fenced and fencing had been up for, from what we understood from, from the road crew, fencing had been up for, what, eighty years or so over the course of time?
The fence I replaced had been there for a long, long time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wees here. I really would like to see this go to a study session with us as soon as possible. There's some information that the Kendall-Spargers have brought forward that I was unaware of and, and I would like to discuss them with planning and zoning and with the deputy administrator and the administrator and the commission itself. Is that possible?
Yes, I think we, we need to do that and as soon as possible. So we'll get with administrator to see if we can get that on next week's probably have a study session on that. Anything else? Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Kendall-Sparger. Thank you for your time. Any other questions by any commissioners? All right. This time, if no one else has any information or discussion, we'll, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And, and this time, we'll, the consent agenda is approval of prior amendments, an approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable and payroll, and approval of public forum agenda. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda? Hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved. Next item, we will move into the, into the action items.
Item number one, letter of appointment to Ohio Township Board with Jamie Doss County Clerk.
Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning, commissioners. Today I have before you an appointment for Jason Kern for the Ohio Township Clerk position. He's been on the board for a while. He was trustee originally, but didn't run in this last election. So, but he is offered to take over the clerk position that is currently vacant.
Okay. And reading this, I think you'd be great addition to the, are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Any members of the public who wish to speak? Hearing none, I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, go ahead, Bob. I'm sorry.
Mr. Vidrickson, I move that we appoint Jason Kern as clerk of the Ohio Township Board.
Second.
Okay. It's been, motion and seconded. Are there any further comments? Hearing none, I will call for a vote on approving Jason Kern as clerk to the Ohio Township Board. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next motion, next item, I'm sorry.
RFA one-two-six dash two-one Sheriff's Office Bargaining Unit, FOP twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two Amendment MOU with Marilyn Lemer, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, commissioners. This request is due to us experiencing a vast challenge with hiring and retaining corrections officers. We are currently short eleven officers. Our advertising efforts have included newspaper, radio, TV, billboards, social media, various recruiting sites and resources in colleges with criminal justice-type degrees. Some of our positions have been sitting vacant for six months, so we are experiencing positions vacant much longer in corrections officer than any other position within Sling County. We currently filled a position in late January that was vacated back in July of twenty-twenty, so it did sit vacant for quite a while. On October twenty-seven, twenty-twenty, we signed an agreement for wages for twenty-twenty-one. And then in January of this year, we did receive a request from FOP or the Fraternal Order of Police to negotiate for twenty-twenty-two. And as a result of that negotiations, we are bringing before you a memorandum of understanding reflecting the following for the Sheriff's Office Bargaining Unit, FOP, in an effort to combat the hiring and retention crisis that we're going through at this time, and then also to be a little bit more competitive. The amendment is for the twenty-twenty-three agreement to implement a two-grade increase for all positions covered by this bargaining unit effective April five, twenty-twenty-one. In exchange, we would delay the five hundred dollar one-time payment that is currently scheduled for December twenty-twenty-one, and we would move that to July twenty-twenty-two. This would bring the base starting salary for corrections officer from fifteen dollars an hour to sixteen thirty-five per hour for those entry-level officers. The FOP did request to eliminate the corrections officer fifteen hundred dollar hiring incentive in lieu of this above proposal, with the exception of those that were recently recruited or hired into that program. The county would like to retain this incentive for the time being to better attract corrections officer applicants during this hiring and retention crisis. The alternatives for action is to sign the memorandum of understanding, do not sign the memorandum of understanding, or direct staff to renegotiate. Our recommendation is to sign the memorandum of understanding. The twenty-twenty-one budget impact to this is an additional one hundred forty thousand dollars, three eighty-four for the two-grade increase for the covered positions. In addition, another sixty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars in eligible anniversary step increases during the remainder of twenty-twenty-one, and then additional forty thousand two thirty-nine in benefit expenses for a total estimated expense of two hundred and forty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars. The majority of the funding would come from the current vacancies that are estimated at one hundred fifteen thousand two hundred dollars in salaries, twenty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars in benefits, and then the forty-two thousand five hundred dollars by deferring the five hundred dollar payment for twenty-twenty, payment to twenty-twenty-two for a total of one hundred and eighty thousand oh seventy-two. That does have a deficit of sixty-seven thousand three seventy-one that would first be funded by additional possible sheriff's office turnover vacancies, and then there would be sufficient budget authority that would exist in the general courthouse budget to cover the overage if needed. And I am available for questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners at this time?
This is Commissioner Vidrickson, and I, I would state that I'm in favor of this for a couple of reasons. Number one, these, these positions have been, we've had a difficult time filling the positions. And I think if we were to really check into it further, it's a dangerous situation over there to be understaffed. And I think Maryland has documentation on injuries and things like that that are going on. And further, I mean, I just want, I want the pay to be equal to what, what that job is. And it, obviously, we've been a little bit short in that regard for, for some time now. So I would like to get that, I would like to see this pass.
Thank you, Commissioner Vidrickson. Any other commissioners?
Commissioner Wees here. I, I agree with Commissioner Vidrickson. I, I think that position has been underpaid for a while and, and the trouble that we've had in filling those positions and, and getting staffing up where it belongs has been going on for quite a while. And I, I feel it's time that we, we make some type of movement to correct this problem and, and to get the pay equal to, at least equal to or better than surrounding counties.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners? Any members of the public who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, nobody has their hand raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Chairman, I move, this is Commissioner Shadwick. I apologize. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two SO bargaining unit FOP amendment as presented by.
Mr. Vidrickson, and I second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA one-two-six dash twenty-one Sheriff's Office Bargaining Unit, FOP twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-two Amendment MOU. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for a vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Mr. Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Next item.
Item number three, RFA one-two-four dash two-one bid award for twenty-twenty-one chemical purchase with David Flaherty II, weed supervisor.
Good morning, David.
Good morning, commissioners. Today I'm here on a request for action for twenty-twenty-one chemical purchases. The Noxious Weed Department is seeking approval to award bids for twenty-twenty-one chemical purchases. Bids were open Friday, February fifth, eleven AM, twenty-twenty-one. A total of three bids were received. Alternative actions, we can accept the bids as indicated in the staff recommendation. We can reject the bids. Staff recommends awarding Van Dees Supply Company the bid for all twenty-twenty-one chemical purchases, while the amount of each chemical is in an estimation based upon prior usage. By accepting their bid, the unit prices are validate, valid through March twenty-twenty-two, should more of any one chemical need to be purchased. Van Dees has supplied chemicals to Sling County since twenty-sixteen. Since that time, Van Dees has had a good record of performance with us. The Noxious Weed Department has never incurred their thirty-dollar delivery fee due to the department always ordering more than five hundred dollars in chemical at any one time to qualify for free delivery. Even though the other two vendors have, have a few cheaper unit prices, Van Dees has the overall lowest cost for our minimum amount ordered. If the department would order from the cheapest unit price of each chemical, delivery fees would occur more often resulting in higher overall cost. Our chemical is purchased for the use by the county, county for weed control and county properties and right-ofways. Chemical purchased is also sold to the public. Our budget impact, a hundred and four thousand was budgeted in twenty-twenty-one for the purchase of chemicals. The total expenditures will be determined by the actual amount of each chemical that will be purchased through November of twenty-twenty-one. I'm open for questions if you haven't.
David, this is Commissioner Vidrickson, and, and you mentioned that overall the Van Dees had the, the cheapest total.
Yeah.
Bid, but in the, in the sheet that I'm looking at, okay, I'm sorry, I've looked at the wrong column. They're at thirty-seven, seven fifty-six. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That answers my question right there. Thank you.
Yes. Any other comments? Any members of the public who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, no one has their hand raised at this time.
Okay. I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Vidrickson, and I move that we award the bid for twenty-twenty-one Noxious Weed Chemical Purchase to Van Dees Supply Company as presented by staff.
Commissioner Shadwick, second.
Are there any other comments? We have, it has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA one-two-four dash twenty-one bid award for twenty-twenty-one chemical purchase. Are there any further comments? Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Next item.
Item number four, RFA one twenty-five dash two-one Spring two thousand and twenty-one Sheltering Memorandum of Understanding with Kansas Division of Emergency Management. Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Commission. I am here this morning to request entering into a spring of two thousand and twenty-one sheltering M O U with KDEM to cover the public assistance for the sheltering. A little background on this M O U is that we entered one in the fall of twenty twenty for both universities when we found out that the Federal Emergency Management Agency, which is responsible for public assistance, released some sheltering guidance saying that colleges and universities were on their own for providing shelter. During that time period, there was a little gray area, and we weren't entirely sure what was going on. So the county stepped up to ensure that everyone had a safe place to isolate and quarantine, and we utilized the M O U that we have with Webster for sheltering during the disaster. We have several of those, however, Webster's the only one that is a COVID-appropriate shelter. So entering in this M O U allows for the state to do the paperwork for public assistance for the sheltering that the county is doing. The state is already doing the paperwork for the Best Western that we have here as it is a state-run shelter. So they would just be taking on the responsibility of doing the paperwork half for the sheltering for Webster, and then through this M O U would be reimbursing the county back for their expenses. Something that has changed since I was here last with an M O U. On July twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-one, President Biden issued an M O U basically increasing the public assistance program from only covering seventy-five percent federally to covering a hundred percent for all category B expenses. So there is still some clarification we're needing because according to the documentation, sheltering isn't explicitly listed out in category B, but I was insured by the state that they were thinking that it was going to be, it's just a matter of time. So as it sits now, unlike other disasters, all expenses that we utilize and then go through public assistance will be a hundred percent reimbursed by the federal government. Are there any questions? I know this is using.
No, I don't have any of those, pretty, pretty to the point. Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, no one has their hand raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move, this is Commissioner Shadwick, and I move, we approve by signature the K D E M Spring two thousand and twenty-one Sheltering Memorandum of Understanding.
Commissioner Vidrickson, and I will second that motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA one twenty-five dash twenty-one Spring two thousand and twenty-one Sheltering Memorandum of Understanding with Kansas Division of Emergency Management. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next item.
Item number five, RFA one twenty dash twenty-one two thousand and twenty-one Federal Fund Exchange Agreement with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, commissioners. So I'm here this morning to approve the two thousand and twenty-one Federal Fund Exchange Agreement. This is with Kansas Department of Transportation. Sling County will be receiving two hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and sixty cents in federal funds for the two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year. This agreement converts those federal funds at a ninety-ten exchange rate to, for a total exchange of two hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Once the funds are converted, they can be used by Sling County for any transportation-related expense. Alternatives for action is to, number one, sign the agreement that converts the funds to state dollars, which will make the funds available to Sling County through a transportation reimbursement program. The second alternative is to not sign the agreement and leave the dollars as federal funds. Then these funds can be used through a federally funded project, federally funded project procedure through KDOT. Staff recommends to exchange their federal funds by signing the agreement. Exchanging the funds will provide two hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-four cents for any type of transportation-related project. Engineering would like to use these funds to expand our two thousand and twenty-one asphalt road maintenance program. And so this would be your overlays, chip seals, crack seals, and aggregate sheltering. So are there any questions?
Justin, this is Commissioner Vidrickson, and I'm trying to find, it says a one-hundred percent federal share. So there's no, there's, is this the same fund that last year, I think we traded seventy-five cents on the dollar or ninety cents on the dollar or whatever it was, is this the same program?
Yeah, this is the same program. Last year was ninety cents on the dollar. I believe it was three, if not four years ago, it did drop to a seventy-five percent exchange rate. And then that was just for one year, and then they bumped it up to ninety percent. And so, yeah, this is something that we do every year.
But this year, what is the percentage this year? Is it the hundred percent?
No, no, it's the ninety, ninety percent.
It's still ninety percent, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? Any members of the public who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, no one has their hand raised at this time.
Okay, thank you, Phil, I mean, Brad. I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, this is Bob Vidrickson, and I move, we approve by signature the two thousand and twenty-one Federal Fund Exchange Agreement as presented by staff.
Commissioner Shadwick, can I second?
Are there any further comments? It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA one twenty dash twenty-one for the year two thousand and twenty-one Federal Fund Exchange Agreement. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Mr. Wees?
Aye.
Mr. Vidrickson?
Aye.
Mr. Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Item number six, RFA one-two-one dash two-one bid award for mower deck with Darren Fishel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Good morning, Darren. Are we there, Darren?
This is, RFA is for the purchase of one new mower deck that was let out for bid according to County Policy forty dash thirty-two. Bids were sent to three dealers, and we received two bids. One from Can Equipped Salina, Kansas for seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars. One from Prairieland Partners, Abilene, Kansas for seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars. The alternatives for action would be to accept the bid from Can Equipped in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars, accept the bid from Prairieland Partners in the amount of seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars. Three, rebid the equipment, or four, reject all bids. Staff recommends accepting the bid from Can Equipped Salina, Kansas in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars. The equipment they bid meets all specification. It is the same brand and model of our current mower inventory, which means the spare parts and tires we currently carry are interchangeable. These are Land Pride mowers manufactured here in Salina. It has been the goal of this department to turn over mowers on a regular basis to improve the resale value of the equipment instead of spending more money on worn-out outdated equipment. This replaces a two thousand and five Land Pride mowing deck that will be sold on Purple Wave. The delivery date's expected in June, two thousand and twenty-one. The budget impact is the money will be used from our O eleven Capital Outlay Line item in the two thousand and twenty-one Road and Bridge budget. There, we budgeted twenty thousand dollars for this item. We currently have an unencumbered balance of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. This purchase price of seventeen thousand and one hundred dollars will leave a balance of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand and sixty-five dollars.
Thank you, Darren. Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners? Any members of the public who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, no one has their hand raised at this time.
Okay, I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Commissioner Shadwick, Mr. Chairman, I move, we award the bid to Can Equipped in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars on new mower deck. Presented by staff.
And this, Commissioner Vidrickson, I will second the motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA dash one twenty-one dash twenty-one bid award for mower deck in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars. And are there any further comments? If not, I will call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Mr. Wees?
Aye.
Mr. Vidrickson?
Aye.
Mr. Shadwick?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next item.
Item number seven, RFA one twenty-two dash two-one bid award for Assistant Superintendent Truck with Darren Fishel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Good morning again, Darren.
Again, this RFA is for the purchase of one new two thousand and twenty-one half-ton extended cab four-wheel-drive Assistant Superintendent Truck that was let out for bid according to County Policy forty thirty-two. We received two bids. One from Home Automotive of Salina, Kansas for thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-four cents. One from Long MacArthur Ford, Salina, Kansas for thirty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. The alternatives for action would be to accept the bid from Home Automotive, accept the bid from Long MacArthur, or reject bids, and direct staff to an alternate course of action. Staff recommends accepting the bid from Home Automotive. This truck will replace a two thousand and twelve Ford F-150 half-ton extended cab four-wheel drive with a hundred and ninety thousand miles used by the administrator. The new truck will go to the Assistant Superintendent, whose current truck is a two thousand and fourteen Ford with a hundred and twenty-two thousand miles. His truck will then rotate to the administrator to extend the life of the truck. The budget impact is money will be used from the O eleven Capital Outlay Line item in the two thousand and twenty-one Road and Bridge budget. This purchase is in lieu of a crew six-pack truck we had sixty-five thousand dollars budgeted for. We committed part of those dollars for the purchase of the two thousand and twenty-one motor grinders. This required us to shift equipment purchases between years because we had overspent a little on what we had figured the motor grinders would cost. That didn't leave enough in the line item to purchase that truck. So our unencumbered balance in this line item is one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. The purchase price of the truck of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-four cents would leave a balance of a hundred and four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-six cents.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions, comments from commissioners?
Darren, it's Commissioner Wees. How far out, how long is this bid good for?
You know, I believe it's sixty days. And so we've had it probably three weeks now, so end of March, I believe.
Commissioner Vidrickson, is this truck in stock?
No, it is not. It would be probably deliveries usually six to eight weeks.
Okay, this is Commissioner Wees one more time. And maybe the administrator can answer some of these questions, but we still have an unresolved issue with, as it relates to possibly going to a lease-type program. Would that, would we have that information in front of us where we could make that decision before moving forward with this and still have the bid available?
Through the chair, County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes. I would hope that we would have information on leasing programs by the middle of March, but, you know, that's subject to whatever your commission decides to do with that information. That might not be the end of the process. I do know that not all Road and Bridge vehicles were intended for that program. Darren, I think, had selected three, I think, vehicles. So that's, there's not necessarily a a need to delay this in order to still take advantage of a potential leasing program.
Commissioner Wees, I appreciate that clarification.
That was one of the same, same thoughts that I had. So thank you, Phil, for taking care of that, and thank you, Commissioner Wees, for bringing that to our attention again. So are there any other questions or comments from commissioners? Any members of the public who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, no one has their hand raised at this time.
Okay, thank you, Brad. I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
This is Commissioner Vidrickson. Before I make a motion, I would just like to say that I'm happy to see that we have two bids on this. I know the last time or two, we've only had one bid on some of this stuff. So I guess my comment would be welcome Home Automotive to the arena of bidding on county equipment, and a big thank you to Long MacArthur, who is a longtime bidder and bids every time, and we appreciate their, their interaction with us also. But that having been said, Mr. Chairman, I move, we award the bid for a two thousand and twenty-one pickup-to-home automotive in the amount of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars, thirty-four cents as presented by staff.
Commissioner Shadwick, second?
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA one twenty-two dash twenty-one bid award for Assistant Superintendent Truck. Are there any further comments? If not, I'll call for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Mr. Wees?
Aye.
Mr. Vidrickson?
Aye.
Mr. Shadwick?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next item.
Item number eight, RFA one twenty-three dash two-one bid award for heavy haul equipment trailer with Darren Fishel, Road and Bridge Administrator.
Good morning again, Darren.
Brad has, Brad has some trailer pictures I'd like to put up. This is for the purchase of one new sliding axle tilt trailer to haul heavy equipment. This was let out for bid in accordance with the Sling County forty thirty-two procurement's purchasing contracts. We received two bids. One from Landall Company of Marysville, Kansas for seventy-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety cents. They also quoted an optional twenty-thousand-pound winch instead of a ten-thousand-pound winch, which was seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-six. We also got a bid from Westmark from Saris, California for eighty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. The alternatives for action would be accept the bid from Landall in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety cents with the high-capacity winch, accept the bid from Landall in the amount of seventy-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety cents. and seventy seven dollars and ninety cents with the low capacity winch, three in the amount of eighty one thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollars with a low capacity winch, four reject all bids, rebid, or direct staff to an alternative. Brad, could you go to the second picture? Staff recommends accepting the bid from the Landall LLC in the amount of seventy eight thousand, one hundred and seventy seven dollars and ninety cents for the sliding axle tilt trailer with the twenty thousand capacity winch. The trailers also used for equipment recovery. Could you go to the third picture, Brad? This is a planned addition to our heavy equipment haul inventory. We will now have two trailer trailers capable of hauling our heaviest equipment. The budget impact is money will be used from the O eleven capital outlay line item in the twenty twenty one Roden Bridge budget. There there is ninety thousand dollars budgeted for this item in the twenty twenty one budget. The unencumbered balance is one hundred and four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and sixty six cents. This purchase price of seventy eight thousand, one hundred and seventy seven dollars and ninety cents would leave a balance of twenty five thousand, nine hundred and seventy two dollars and seventy six cents.
Hey, Darren, are there any questions or comments from the commissioners?
Commissioner Wees here, I got a couple of questions, Darren. How many days a week are you currently using that trailer that you now have?
We use it every every day of the week. You know, I'm not going to say right right now in the zero degree temperatures, but that trailer gets used by multiple crews multiple times a day sometimes, but it gets used every day of the week.
And the reason for an additional trailer is something isn't happening because that trailer is being used? Is that what you're telling us?
It is, it is, you know, one of there's there's two things that drive this addition, Mr. Wees. One is when that trailer breaks down, we have no way to haul our heaviest of equipment. And two, it makes it makes us more flexible. So one crew doesn't have to wait for a truck to get freed up and truck and trailer to get freed up in order to move. That has, we have two two crews that have excavators that weigh forty thousand plus, and we only have one trailer that can haul that that type of equipment. So there are times then it becomes that they have to move around frequently and and wait. I'll give an example, the flood of twenty nineteen, you know, trying to, because of the damage and the way things were moving around, we would have, we would have been a little bit, it would have helped to have another trailer to move.
And do you have two tractors to pull the trailers, or would there have to be an expense of another tractor?
There would, they would, we need to rebuild one tractor we have. We purchased a new one last year, and then we had one rebuilt, and we kept the old tractor with anticipation of rebuilding it this year to match the new trailer.
And my last question, it appears you must have had bid for the low capacity winch on your bids, and that was just an option that Landall put on with the high capacity, is that correct?
Yes.
And do you foresee a need for that that twenty thousand pound versus the ten thousand?
I do, they actually called me about that, and I think we missed that in our bids. I think the I think the minimum capacity should have been twenty thousand.
Thank you, Darren.
Darren, I have a quick question. This is Commissioner Sparks. On that capacity on that twenty thousand pounds, and you just made a statement, it's like, let's sit back and say your excavator, it was forty thousand pounds and it went dead. How would a twenty thousand pound winch pull a forty thousand pound up on this trailer?
You're not going to recover an excavator with that. That's okay, that's that's more for motor grinders, mowers, and trucks.
Gotcha. No matter what the weight is, they can roll a little easier.
Yes.
Yes, gotcha. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Any members of the public who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, nobody has their hand raised at this time.
Hey, I'll bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Commissioner Chadwick and Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for the new trailer as presented by staff, Landall Company in the amount of seventy eight thousand, one hundred and seventy seven dollars and ninety.
This is Commissioner Vidrickson, and I will second the motion.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA dash one twenty three dash twenty one bid award for heavy haul equipment trailer. Are there any further comments? If not, we'll call for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Mr. Wees?
Aye.
Mr. Vidrickson?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next item?
Item number nine, review of amendment number one to resolution twenty dash twenty two ninety seven, review of section six, mass mandate with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Jason.
Just as soon as Brad gets the presentation up here. All right, so this is the COVID update for February sixteenth. Next slide, please. As we are kind of hitting through several first in the next couple of months, it was February eleventh that the WHO named it as actually COVID nineteen. So that's a little piece of your COVID history to start this one off. Next slide. All right, looking at the U.S. picture, we can see that U.S. cases are down in the last two weeks from the previous two weeks, which is a good sign. There was a slight increase in deaths from the previous two weeks, but as it follows that, two weeks for cases, two weeks for hospitalizations, potentially two weeks for deaths, that's not to be unexpected. Next slide, please. All right, here is our state of Kansas update. I think that is probably one of the lowest two week case updates for the state that I have seen in the last several months as well, with ten thousand new cases in the last two weeks. Next slide. For the Celine County overview, we are sitting at fifty eight hundred cases. The big thing I want to make a note of and point out here is that after several weeks of the hospital being inundated with COVID patients, as of yesterday, they were down to eight patients in the hospital, which is, I think, the lowest number we've seen of COVID patients in the hospital probably since October. So again, you know, all the indicators are really looking better as we're moving forward. Next slide. Same thing with cases in Celine County. You can see here that our case numbers for the month of February are about two hundred and ninety two, much lower, you know, for the mid month point than what we experienced even last month. So again, trending in the right direction. Next slide. Same with deaths, we've only had three this month, in the month of February. Again, trending in the right direction. Next slide. Clusters still continue, and some of that is just from the the extent of dealing with those clusters and whether there's another case associated with it. My hope, though, that as we are now really drawing down on cases, that we'll be able to start closing out some of these clusters that may have been sitting in the state system for a little bit. Excuse me, next slide. For testing, so testing is still occurring and at the Church of the Cross with Well Health, and as I've said in the past, you can go to the website, gogettested.com to find a time and get registered if you want to be tested. In the month of January, there were some testing events that still occurred. One of the questions is that comes up is, are the numbers that we're seeing of cases going down because cases are going down or because there's less testing? And I think there's a little bit of both there. Even though there is less testing that's been happening, there's also been a decline in demand for testing outside of going to your your provider. But one of the things in looking at the results or the the batch results coming from Well Health and from CRL, which is the lab that was running the test for some of the other mass testing clinics last month, is that even with a decrease in demand for testing, then the percentage of results coming out of those those batches of results were were much smaller too. So in the neighborhood of less than ten percent of all the results were coming back positive. So that's a good sign for as we're moving forward into into the end of winter and into spring. Next slide. So vaccine updates, this is probably still what most people want to know about. These are our current phase two priorities. We've reached that thirty percent of those over sixty five, and so we're working through first responders, K through twelve staff and childcare workers, those that are city and county and critical infrastructure. And again, if you fall into a phase two category, which later on is the definition and breakdown of that category, and you have not registered yet and you want to get vaccinated, please go to the vaccinatecelinecountyks dot com and get vaccinated. One other thing as well is on that website, when you get called for your appointment, you can go to that website and print off your consent paperwork that you need to fill out prior to going there. Now, if you don't have the paperwork prior to showing up for your appointment, that's fine, you can fill it out onsite, that's not an issue, but this helps speed things up if you haven't filled out already ahead of time. If you want to see how we stack up week to week about how much vaccine we are receiving compared to other counties, the kansasvaccine.gov website has that comparison week to week about how much each county is being allocated. On the horizon, though, the new Johnson and Johnson vaccine is a one dose vaccine that goes up to the in front of the FDA on the twenty sixth to be reviewed, and then some weeks after that, if it's approved, we could start seeing that as an additional available option besides the Pfizer and the Moderna. I don't have much information about what kind of requirements they may have, if they decide that they are going to direct it to specific types of groups or whatever the case may be, but just know that there is that on the horizon for it, another option or another tool in this fight moving forward to combat COVID. Next slide. So I also wanted to kind of mention a minute because they are vaccine that has been coming into the county in more than in more than one way. One of them was the National Pharmacy Program for Long Term Care. That was the vaccine that was coming from the federal administration down to the nursing homes through CVS and Walgreens, and most of those have already received both their first and second shots. So that one is pretty much complete. The bulk of our vaccine right now is coming from allocations from KDHE to local health departments, and that is the current supply that we are using to give to people at the the joint vaccination clinic at the JCPenney building. And then there's also the new stream that is the federal retail pharmacy program. Right now in the area, two of the local Dillons are part of that. If you, they are only doing over sixty five, I think they are maybe getting about a hundred per week potentially, but if somebody over sixty five wants to try and register that way to get their get their vaccine, the the website is listed right here. And from what we are being told, the feds intend to bring more pharmacies over time to this program, such as Walmart, CVS, Walgreens, and several other chains. The one thing to keep in mind about both the the National Pharmacy Program for Long Term Care and the Federal Retail Pharmacy Program is that those are coming from federal allotments of vaccine and do not impact the allotment that we receive. So that's in addition to what we are already getting. So like this week, we got nine hundred doses to be able to give, and then whatever the the two Dillons pharmacies get is on top of that. So that's a bonus for our community, and it also puts us a little bit further ahead at trying to get everybody vaccinated, which as of Friday, we have got had over fifty five hundred people that have received either one or both vaccines. And like I said, we have nine hundred scheduled for this week, and we have nine hundred new ones scheduled for next week. And one of the things I really want to point out is that that is going to be about fifteen percent of the adult population that's been vaccinated, but more importantly is that that will now, there will be more people that have received one or both doses of vaccine than have had COVID in the county since the beginning of the pandemic. So that's that's just something that we want to be able to celebrate. And again, you know, bright lights looking forward as far as maybe one day getting out of this pandemic and everything else. Next slide. So if people are looking for where to find where vaccine is being given at, this is for information, so on the kansasvaccine.gov website, excuse me, is this new tool that KDHE has built, it's called Find My Vaccine, whether they're looking to see if there's vaccine here or somewhere else around the state, this screenshot shows that you can be able to look at an area of say within fifty miles or five miles or ten miles or wherever you're at, see what places are providing vaccine, and what information and how to register for for vaccine at that site. This is still something that's new that they have been developing, so there are still some sites that may be giving vaccine that aren't on here yet, such as the two Dillons are not on on this site yet and clickable. However, I expect as other pharmacies come on board, we will see that showing up on there. Next slide. So probably one of the things that everybody should be excited about is, do you have to quarantine after you are fully vaccinated? And the answer is, no, you do not, provided you meet these these criteria, so that you've had both vaccines and it's with two weeks after your second dose, that means that you are fully vaccinated, you're exposed to somebody with COVID nineteen within three months of your last dose, and you have remained asymptomatic since that exposure. KDHE is updating their guidance now to match that. If you want to read more about it, the the link is listed down there below. But if anything, if somebody was wondering whether they should get vaccinated or not, this is a good incentive because then you don't have to worry about quarantine after the fact. Next slide. So I left these next couple of slides in here, it just breaks down again, the vaccination phases, and we are in phase two and probably will be in phase two for quite a while. There's a lot of people that fall into that phase. Next slide. And again, these definition slides are just there for information, these are what congregates settings, and we'll be working down through them eventually. Next slide. The high contact critical workers. Next slide. And if you want to know where to find out where to find information, we've got several places for you to be able to do that. The newsletters, the Vax Facts that goes out, KSAL, KINA, we're putting up all kinds of stuff on our social media routinely. We filmed the second installment of FAQ Friday the other day, and it's up on the YouTube page on Media Connection, and of course, the celine.org coronavirus page has links on there as well. And as always, if this doesn't solve the question that you're that you're looking for or doesn't answer it, then please reach out to us, and we will try to get those questions answered for you. You can reach out through email or directly through Facebook or one of those social media avenues. Next slide. So to the to the major unknown still is the COVID variants. You may have seen the news report yesterday about the second case of the UK variant that has been found in the state in Cedric County, and that that UK variant is that B one one seven that you see up there at the top, which has now been reported in forty states. And that's really the unknown thing that we're watching right now. We really don't know how that's going to impact things. A recent article from the CDC mentioned that the UK variant could be the predominant variant floating around or in mentioned that the UK variant could be the predominant variant floating around or in circulation by March. But there's just not a lot of additional information yet as far as how that's circulating and if there are more cases, which I suspect there probably are. But that information is still limited because they are only doing genetic sequencing on a a small sample of tests that are sent to K D H E. So as that as that continues to change, we'll be continuing to watch that and and put that information into our overall decision making. Next slide. Some of you also may have heard talk about double masking. So I've provided some information up here about some some reasons why the CDC talks about double masking for improved fit or improved filtration, depending on the type of mask that you're using. There is a link there to the study that this information came from. If you want to read further into it. Additionally, at the bottom of that slide is a link to the CDC page where this information came from, which also goes into some more detailed information about how to properly wear your mask, the different types of masks and those types of things. We are not planning to pursue anything about double masking as far as within our mask orders right now. I think we just need to continue focusing on everybody masking and masking properly. And then this is an additional option for those who feel like they need it at this point. Next slide. So that concludes the COVID update for February 16th. And I will, if there are any questions.
Jason, this is Commissioner Vidrickson, and I had a few questions, but you've pretty well taken care of them. One is left here, though, on on when the Dillons and Walgreens, et cetera. And are those closed to out of county? Or is there any way to check that? Or does that count against our county count? Or or do they just open it up for anyone? Or how does that work?
So the understanding I have right now is that the state has put the 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 primary group, the focus group was those over 65. The state has not, to the best of my knowledge, made any type of residency requirement. So theoretically, anybody from a neighboring county could register through one of those pharmacies and come get the vaccine. And being that it's a federal program, we don't have very much control over over that part of it.
Does does that residency restriction also apply for the the K D H E? In other words, if someone goes through the through your organization or through Solana family physicians and so forth, and they are not from Celine County, how do we exclude them or how?
So our primary focus has been those that live and those that work in Celine County. We have a lot of people that that work here that may not necessarily live here. But they are important to the the infrastructure and they fall into those groups. When we on the registration process, if you'll remember, it does ask for their address and it also asks if they live and work in the county. And that is part of the sorting process when we are going through all of the registrations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wees here. I got a couple of questions. Do you know that do you have a number total count of the K through 12 people who would be eligible?
I have an estimate.
Or just get me close.
Let me see here a second. As of last week, it was around 900 K through 12 and childcare providers that had registered. Now, I'm sure that there are many more that are eligible that for whatever reason haven't registered. And for that number of K through 12 and childcare providers, there were many of them that fell into the over 65. So that doesn't count them because they're already in the primary group. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was wanting to know. Yeah, and I wanted that number also, but I was trying to get a wrap my head around how many are eligible. And you don't have that through U S D three oh five or anything, what their staff would be.
Well, they at one point were trying to collect some of that information. But it wasn't, as far as trying to give us specific numbers per building or anything like that, there wasn't anything that we could do with it. So no, I haven't collected that specific information about how many of them wanted to get vaccinated per school district.
It wasn't, the question wasn't how many wanted to, the question of how many are eligible to.
As far as how many eligible, I don't know. I would have to find out from each school district, how many would fall into that eligibility.
Do you know the the number of 65 and over who are currently on the list?
Let me see here. I think we still have about if I'm reading this right, about 3,500 still to get vaccinated.
Okay, and and as you go through that phase two, you have different categories, whether they're K through 12 or over 65 or over whatever. Do you take a percentage of the doses that are allotted and then dole them out?
Right. So for the the current groups right now, like for the ones that we're giving this week, the ones that we're giving next week, we did a a 50 50 split. 50% went towards the over 65. About 30, 35% give or take went toward that whole K through 12 and childcare providers. And then the other 15 to 20% went toward the first responders, fire, law enforcement, those critical city county workers. And then actually, we will have probably that same breakdown for the next week. And then as we get through a majority of those groups, we have been talking about how to tackle the rest of the different groups within the breakdown. Because they are varying numbers. And so as we get through the next couple of weeks, but we're meeting weekly about how we are what percentages and how we're trying to get through these all these different categories.
Okay, with with that information, then Jason, if if the 900 doses a week hold and you're given 30% of that to K through 12 in approximately three weeks, you will have K through 12 vaccinated?
Approximately, sir, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Jason, this is Commissioner White. I had I had the privilege of going out to J C Pennies. That was last week and I was really impressed. Staff was very knowledgeable and explained the process and where to go and what to do. And I everybody had such a good attitude and you could even though everybody's wearing their mask, you can still see him a smile. And so they were enjoying what they were doing and and I want to commend you and your staff and your partners on on a well done clinic.
Thank you, sir. I'll pass that along to them.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? But thank you, Jason, for that update.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a hand raised. Lanay Meyer.
Yes, Jason, I just wanted to clarify and I may have missed you saying this, but it's my understanding or agreed that even after you've had both vaccines, even though over two, three weeks, then you're not having to quarantine, but it's my understanding that we still should be wearing a mask and social distancing when we do go out. Is that correct information? And maybe you said that and I missed it.
No, I didn't. But that is correct, ma'am. Even after being fully vaccinated, you still have to wear a mask. You still need to social distance. And that will probably still go on for for quite a while until we we get a majority of the population vaccinated.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lanay. Any other comments by public?
Mr. Chairman, no one has their hand raised at this time.
Okay. Next item.
Item number 10, Public Health Order with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, Jason. Good morning again. So you saw the data in the previous presentation. And while I I'm confident that we are getting closer to a point, you know, the light is at the end of the tunnel, as we say. But we're not quite to the end of the tunnel yet. I I think it would be premature to let our health order expire on February 21st. I do think, though, that we are definitely in a position where we could loosen up some of the restrictions that we've had in the order. So right now, my current thoughts are that to plan to issue another order on February 22nd after the current one expires. But given the improvements that we have seen, raise the mass gathering limit from 15 to 50 individuals. And then also raise the percentage that's listed in section two, number five about auditoriums and exhibit halls. And raise that from 25% of capacity to 50% of capacity. And then have the 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 new order in place for an additional four weeks that would expire on March 21st. A couple of additional reasons is that would also give us time to get a greater number of the population vaccinated. If we start to see increases in cases after raising this limit, it's easier to make changes than it is to try and react an entire new piece of health order. And then also to be able to really kind of get a better sense of what's happening with the COVID-19 variants in the state and in the area as well.
Any other comments by commissioners?
Mr. Chadwick here. Jason, would the city have to amend what they what they have on this mass gathering to do this?
The city didn't enact anything on mass gathering. They had talked about potentially a while back when we thought we were when I was thinking about letting the the previous one expire, but no, with their mask order, it would stay in place, the same with ours. And then they wouldn't have to do anything with the mass gathering.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Vidrickson. Sorry. Do we need to enact anything here, Jason? Or does does your authority go beyond what we're talking about here? I mean, be able to just let you issue a health order and that's the end of it? Is that where we go? Or because we don't have a a RFA or anything?
Right. So under my current authority, I can reissue the health order. Again, the commission, if they decided that they wanted to review, amend or revoke the health order, then you would would call meeting or add it to your agenda for that additional action.
All right, let's see. Has been my position for four and a half years or a little over four years on the commission. I'm going to continue to take my direction from the Health Department and the health officials. And if if that's your recommendation, I'll I'll hang in there with it.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other comments? Any comments from the public?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a hand raised. Lanay Meyer wishes to speak.
Lanay, your your name and address?
Lanay Meyer in from Salina Huntington Road. I just want to say as a citizen, it scares me that that it's increasing from like 25% to 50%. That could mean a lot of people in in some facilities. And I just, I think people may might be getting I don't know if they're getting better with wearing masks, but with people not always wearing masks and doing following the guidelines, it it scares me to see that increase at this point. That's just my opinion. My heart kind of jumped when when he said that.
Okay. All right, Lanay. Well, thank you. Any other public comments?
Mr. Chairman, no one has their hand raised at this time.
Okay. Well, Jason, thank you for your information this morning.
Thank you, gentlemen.
At this time, we'll move on to informational items.
Item number one, Health Department Update with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Can we get it one more time, Jason?
One more time. This is the last one. Get them all in one morning. This update is for the period of August 2020 through February 2021. And of course, although the the main focus of pretty much everything that we have done has been COVID response, there has still been some additional things that have gone on. One of those includes the Becoming a Mom program continuing to offer their proven program to new mothers and to pregnant women and their support persons who are in the the midst of trying to navigate pregnancy in a pandemic. Some places, because of challenges, just put their Becoming a Mom program on hold during all of this. But my staff sought out ways to be creative and still be able to meet the needs of their their clients. Same thing with childcare surveyors. They were able to transition their in-person orientation course to a virtual one. So that that didn't create a barrier to those who wanted to open childcare. And as you know, childcare, not only in the quantity of childcare, but quality childcare continues to be an issue here in the county and and in many places. And so they wanted to ensure that that was still available. Clinic transitioned the flu clinic that we did to a complete drive-through clinic. And we still ended up giving almost as many flu shots as we normally do between the walk-in and the drive-through. And even with some staff turnover, all staff have stepped up, new and old, just to be able to hop in where they needed to provide help during this COVID situation, volunteer their time, be creative and be adaptable to the changes that had to take place at different times. As far as the future goes, of course, you know, as we start looking a little bit down the road towards the end of COVID, we'll we'll still be doing case investigations and contact tracings. But we also are looking at how can we now start transitioning sometime in the next few months and start refocusing back on some of the processes and programs that were in place that have been had to be set aside, such as STD screenings and so forth, that we can be able to start doing again. We do have a small but seasoned group of intermittent staff who are doing case investigations. And I think that if things stay as they are currently, then that group will be able to handle most of the investigations and then permanent staff can be able to start refocusing on the future post-COVID. Of course, in the budget, COVID response has created significant expenditures, but thankfully between COVID grants, the Spark Funds that we were able to cover most of those expenditures. We're also in the process of filling out all of our annual aid to local grant applications through K D H E. And so we'll be submitting those. They're due by March 15th. And then you can see also when we are looking at our current revenue versus expense for the period right now versus where we were last year. Our expense is actually about the same. We do have some increase in revenue and much of that I attribute to grant funding or funds that were had come in post as far as reimbursement for expenses. But we are still doing But we are still doing pretty well in our budget to date. With that, if there are any questions over the update?
Any comments from the commissioners or any comments? Well, Jason, thank you for your update there this morning and look forward to the next month.
Thanks, sir. Gentlemen.
Next item.
Item number two, Live Stop and Expo Update with Rick Lamer, Director.
Good morning, Mr. Rick Lamer.
Good morning, Commissioners. This update will cover December 2020 through February 2021. Since my last update, we've had 22 event days at the Expo Center and 11 canceled event days. The total events for 2020 at the Expo Center were 131 event days with 94 canceled event days. Project Management Contract was awarded to Hutton Construction. To start off on these improvements at the Expo Center, we have a kickoff meeting with them this Friday. So we're excited to get that moving along. And y'all hired a new Expo Center Director, David Flaherty II. Will take over my duties March 20th as I will be retiring on the 19th. County Weed Department. 12,525 and a half acres were aerial sprayed in 2020. Upcoming plans, Expo Center has 13 event days scheduled for March and one cancellation. The Weed Department, David, will be following the annual Noxious Weed Management Report with the State of Kansas. And County Farm, Oliver Hagg Scholarship Applications are due March 31st. You can pick up an application from the Expo Center office at 900 Greeley. Or go on to the celine.org website and, and print one of those off. Budget update. Expo Center deposits for rentals in 2020 was $38,995.20. If you want to compare that. The last year, last year was just a little over 91,000. So as you can see, we didn't have a whole lot of events. A lot of them were canceled. Our 2020 Expo budget ended at 84.31%. Weed Department Chemical Sales for 2020 totaled $94,686.64. Weed Department budget ended at 91.75%. The Weed Special Equipment Fund has a balance of $71,258. And the County Farm account balance is $195,142.65. So with that, I have a short PowerPoint to show you if you have any questions about this part of it. Next slide, please, Brian. Next slide. So these are food distributions. We're still having one a month. We actually have one scheduled for tomorrow beginning at 9:00 AM. Next slide, please. Carol Byer and her group of volunteers do an excellent job of putting this on every, every month. But the problem tomorrow, we're trying to figure out is how to keep them warm. We need some warmer weather. Next, please. Next. Next slide, please. That thing ain't working very well. This was a first congressional GOP meeting. Next, please. Jim DeBois was one of the hosts to this, this meeting they had back in December. Next, please. Next. 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 So Bill Ficus Christmas dinner this year, it looked a lot different. It was just pickup only. Next, please. Bill does a great job with his volunteers getting this all put together. Next, please. This is just a shot of them when they started moving all their supplies in. Usually takes them about a week to get everything moved in. Next, please. This is a shot of all the bread that was brought in for this event. Next, please. And this was a shot, once you picked up your dinner, you could go outside and just take whatever milk you wanted to take with you. Next, please. And this is a shot right before they opened the doors, getting ready to start their carryout. Next, please. And this is a shot of all the cake and cookies. They had tons of sweet stuff that you could take with you. Next. So this is when the event actual, actually started. They served over 2,000 people. It went off really well, except for a little bit of a phone problem. The phones got overwhelmed with people wanting takeout orders. So next year, they're going to try something a little different with cell phones. Next, please. I don't know what's going on with this slideshow. Okay, coming up, Equafest. We're once again proud to be one of the hosts for this event. This will be March 5th through the 7th. They're not having any advanced ticket sales. You will need to go to Tony's Pizza Event Center box office to buy your tickets. Right now, we're in the final planning stages. We're hoping for a lot warmer weather. And this, this show is, is not for just people that own horses. They have tons of stuff for, that would probably interest anybody. Have a lot of new, new vendors this year. And some, some of the clinicians that are coming are from last year, but they also have some, some new ones. They also knew this year is that they'll be having draft horses that will have a farm competition. And they'll have a barrel bash, just to name a few of the newer things that they're having. So we're excited to have this event again. Next, please. This is our calendar for March. Of course, have Equafest. Have a new event in 4H Building. It's a vendor fair that I think is primarily crafts, arts and crafts. And this particular gal, she will be having six of these shows next year in the 4H Building. We also have the 54th Mid-America Farm Show coming up, the 24th through the 20. 23rd through the 26th or the 25th. So they're, they're just now making final plans for that. So we're glad to start picking up a little over here. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you, Rick. Is there any commissioners that have any comments or questions for Mr. Lamer?
Commissioner Reese here. Rick, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the years of service that you've given to the Expo Center and the job you've done. We're going to sorely miss you and, and appreciate everything you have done. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you, Rick. I'm sorry, this will probably be your last update, huh?
This will be my last day. I'd like to say, I'd like to say that it's been a pleasure working with the Board of Commissioners and. And I'm, I'm proud of what we did accomplish. We got the Expo Center lease, the long-term lease and all that. And I just appreciate it very much. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Well, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
We look forward to the new director and where we go from here.
Well, you'll be in good hands. I know David will do a great job, so.
Yes, yeah. You bet. Well, thank you, Rick. Next item.
Item number three, Environmental Health Fees with Tim Hamilton, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Good morning, Tim.
Commissioners, this is Deputy County Administrator Hannah Stanwell. So both Mr. Hamilton and myself will kind of be helping to present this particular information in regards to the environmental health fees. It certainly was a team effort to try to get the information. So I will start out and certainly Tim is here to help answer any questions too that you might have from the code and code standpoint. But this is just some information that's being brought to you at, at your request. To talk a little bit more about the current fee structure that is established for septic systems. The history of the fee structure and then data and some information in regards to some of the, that work that is performed. So Celine County, actually, we employ two full-time environmental health sanitarians. And these are the folks that do all the necessary inspections, technical assistance. And design for wastewater systems for both wells and then also septic systems. We also, these two gentlemen, perform the work in four counties total. Celine County, Ellsworth County, Ottawa County and Lincoln County. So as you can imagine, they, they are certainly kept pretty busy. We did do some research and looked into a little bit of the history of the fee structure. And as far as we were able to go back, we were not able to find any information that indicated that there were separate fees from. New septic systems versus replacements or repairs to septic systems, lateral lines or, or both. So just providing you with that information, also included in this, in this briefing piece of it was a good breakdown. That really talked about each county for the last several years. The number of new septic systems, the number of just septic tank replacements. The number of just lateral line replacements and then the number of both lateral line and tank replacements. And doing all of this information and, and you know, talking to staff and really understanding a little bit more that goes into their inspections or as well as the replacements or new. What we really found was the, the time or the amount of time that it takes to do a brand-new septic installation. Is about the same time that it takes to do lateral line type of work. And it just goes back to a lot of the, the swills that they have to inspect and test and make sure that percolation rates and everything is acceptable for placing a particular system there. With tank replacements, it does take less time. But what we have found is that the number of tanks that are being replaced are also tanks that have been in place for 30-plus years. And we have absolutely no documentation as to where those tanks were placed, how far down deep they were, anything like that. So when they do just tank replacements, they are actually going out and basically, you know, getting all of the data and information necessary. So we can properly document that information and put that information with the address file itself. So that just kind of talks about just a little bit of the, the process piece of it. As far as the, the fee structure, the fees have not been changed since 2014. And what really kind of came about that was back in, before 2012, many counties would receive grant dollars through the local environmental protection program. Those grant dollars ran out in 2012. So it really made counties really have to look at their fee structure. Prior to 2014 and 2013, both Ottawa County and Ellsworth County had the same fee structure of $300 for. It didn't matter if it was a new septic system or if it was a replacement of any part of the septic system. That was the permit fee. And in Celine County, it was 175 and in Lincoln County was 150. Again, in 2014 is when that shift happened with the grant dollars drawing up. As well as just a, a review of making sure that the fee structure was consistent amongst the four counties that, that we did service. And that's when it was raised for all four counties, the fee structure of $300. So we, like I said, we had pulled some, some information in regards to that. And just from what we can tell, 2014 was also that timeframe too, when the environmental health sanitarians were as part of the Health Department. And as you know, back in that time, that was also the transition of the Health Department becoming a county, county-only department and not between the city of Salina and Celine County. So there were some changes that were made there too. But when, in 2014, when they established those fees, it was done basically with a review of personnel costs. All the different continuing education and licensing for the staff that it's required for them to continue. And be kept up to date with, with all of their credentials, mileage costs, et cetera, to determine that best fee structure. But there has been no fee increase since 2014 for any of the four counties. And as I said before, we did pull the data on septic permits. Based on just the new septic systems, just replacement of septic tanks. Replacement of just lateral lines and then replacements of those tank and lateral lines. And that information is included in this briefing. We also did some comparison to some other counties and as far as their fee structure, I will tell you, it was, it was quite interesting. It is definitely a, it is different across the whole entire state. And we tried to pick some counties that were somewhat similar in size, somewhat similar in some of the operation stuff that we do to provide you with some information. As far as what they charge for new septic systems. And then if they have a separate fee structure whatsoever for any type of replacement to repair. What we did find was that several of the counties and several of the ones that were listed there, they have got other fees that they charge for that we don't. Such as any type of site evaluations. Our site evaluations are included in that $300 permit fee for us to go out and help them with trying to site a, a good place for either a well or a septic system. We don't charge for the soil profile piece of it or any additional site visits. Those are some of the things that we found that several other counties have a separate fee structure for that. And then just as a note, so we did get a, get a call from McPherson County when we were asking them about their fee structure. And they are actually in the process of reviewing their fee structure to look at some changes or potentially raising that or lowering that. So I hope that the information that we have provided is, is the information that you all were looking for to look into this just a little bit more. We're certainly, Tim and I are open to any questions that you have or any comments and any direction that you would like staff to, to, to move forward with. And looking at this even a little bit further.
Well, Hannah, this is Commissioner Vidrickson and, and I'm. Was hoping that we would get Ottawa County, Lincoln County and, and, and those that touch our county. Because that seems to be where the complaints are coming from, that, that we charge a whole lot more than they do. What is our fee to the other counties when we, when we go do this for who? Lincoln County, Ottawa County, Ellsworth County? When we go, when we go out there and, and perform a fee for them, what, what is our charge to those counties?
So to answer that question, so we did the, since we are sanitarians or environmental health sanitarians. Do the work in Ellsworth, Lincoln and Ottawa. So that fee for any type of permits in those counties is $300.
Okay. I, I know that through some investigative work behind the scenes a little bit, that there, there are a lot of people that are not, because of the $300, they're not seeking a permit. What, what, how do we, how do we take care of that? Or what's, what's the penalty for a plumber who goes out and knowingly? In- inserts a, a, a septic system and knowing they're supposed to have a permit and they don't have it?
Tim, is that something you could answer through? Tim, is that something you could answer through the code?
Well, I can, I can explain that it's, we do have a fine of, I believe it's $50 per day that we can charge, and if they don't pay it within a certain period of time, then we, I believe, take them to court. And that's usually how that's handled.
I guess then, Mike, to further that question, is how do we find out about it? I mean, when they sell the property, is there a, is there an investigation that goes on there into the septic system, or how does that go?
That usually is the case. I said, usually if there's a real estate transaction, the, one of the requirements is that one of our sanitarians goes out and investigates the system prior to sale.
And the reason I'm saying that is obviously, I mean, a plumber or a homeowner is not going to say, hey, by the way, county, we're going to put in a new septic system, but we're not going to tell you about it. We're not going to, we're not going to call you up and tell you we're doing it, but we're not going to get a, get a permit. So that's where I'm coming from on that. And I guess my, the real thing that I'm looking for is, and it kind of, you touch on it back here, and that is why do we need $300 to do this? And the one paragraph says, well, that continuing ed, licensing, mileage, and so forth. Can you further give us the actual breakdown of that stuff somewhere along the line?
Yes, absolutely. So that was one thing that I had actually looked at when I moved over from urgency management to the county administration, was actually looking at that particular breakdown. Just to kind of give you an idea, just for the two environmental health sanitarians, we, just the planning and zoning budget, we budget $15,217 just to pay out in mileage. And that's each year. So we have been averaging about anywhere from $12,000 to $13,000 just in mileage costs for those two employees. The other piece of it is looking at continuing education. You know, there are certain things that they are required to continue to have as from state and federal credentials for them to be able to perform the jobs. So the continuing education and the training and everything that goes along with it, and then also some of the administrative costs that occur through billing or just even their time. So those are certainly things that we can dive into a lot further to really figure those out. That is going to take just a little bit more time, but that is certainly something that can be done.
Well, there's a couple of numbers that I'm after, and I should have looked this up, I didn't, but the budget that Celine County allows for the sanitation part of this, do you know what that number is? Do you have that by chance? And the second part of the question would be, how much do we receive in reimbursement for fees?
So, yeah, I do have a couple of those rough numbers that I can provide to you. So in 2020, total revenue, so environmental health and planning and zoning is together as one department. So we'd have to do some breakdown between what the environmental fees or revenues were versus planning and zoning revenues, but we do have that information. But we can tell you in 2020, revenues for planning and zoning environmental health was $92,000, and in 2019 was $90,000.
That was our budget?
No, no, that was the, just, those were just revenues.
Well, that was revenue.
Right.
That's pretty significant. And that would be just from fees?
Correct. That is just from permits. So that would be for permits and licenses through environmental health and sanitation and the sanitarians, as well as planning and zoning fees or revenues that were received.
Hannah, that's $3,000 per, I mean, that's 3,066 total septic systems, and if you're doing it that way, there's no way we would have inspected 3,000 systems, is there?
No, no. So that is just, that is not just septic systems. That is, there is well permits, septic systems, planning and zoning fees, as well as each one of the counties that we provide environmental health services to, Ottawa, Ellsworth, and Lincoln, have a contract fee that they pay Celine County for that.
Okay, well, I'm waffling here. One minute I'm thinking we're right on time with this $300, that we're not out of line with other counties, but on the other hand, it doesn't sound like we're coming up with really good number, concrete numbers for me to make a decision, and that troubles me a little bit. And the gentleman that called a few weeks ago indicated that our neighboring counties weren't charging near this much, but they're not on the list either, other than Dickinson County, which is, and McPherson, $100 and $150. So I guess.
Which other counties were you looking for? And I may be able to pull that.
Well, I mean, Ottawa, Ellsworth, Lincoln, those are the surrounding counties that we are included in on that $300.
They are included in that $300 because our staff that is employed by Celine County are the ones that do the inspections and services for all of those counties. The only ones we do not do is Dickinson and McPherson.
I'd like, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Tim.
I was going to say, I'd like to add to, it's the, when you see, like, I can use Dickinson County as an example, when we we charge $150, but the sanitarian in Dickinson County is not a dedicated sanitarian. They, their department has other aspects of environmental health that they have to consider. So they're in charge of like the solid waste transfer station, household hazardous waste, noxious weeds, all of that. So their fees that they charge on this, on the septic side are a reflection of, you know, they're basically trying to keep those fees down because they can raise the fees in other aspects of their operation. So it's kind of deceiving. If they didn't have those other aspects of their operation going on, they would probably be $300 as well. But it's because they're able to defer the cost, any increase in cost in other aspects of that particular operation that they have there, that they, they don't, they wouldn't necessarily have to raise the fees on septic. That's why they're relatively low.
Is there a typical amount of time that's spent on an inspection? I mean, or are they just, do they vary all over the place?
That's a really good question. So typically, and again, that's why we also kind of broke down the information on new septic systems versus just tank replacements, just lateral lines, et cetera. So for a brand-new system, and then also for any type of lateral line replacements or tank and lateral line replacements, you're looking at about anywhere from seven to eight hours of work, depending on the complexity. And that would be just all the phone calls that you get from the contractors or the homeowners, as well as all of the different site visits that you go out there. If we're talking just a tank replacement, that takes anywhere from three to four hours. So it does take a little bit less time. But again, just when we're talking those tank replacements, we're also reinventing the wheel just a little bit with having to go back and get all the documentation as far as where the tank was at and everything. So we have that information for the future.
All right, I'll mull this over in my head, that's for sure, but I sure would like to see some of those breakdowns.
We can certainly get that information.
Thank you.
Hannah, Commissioner Reese here. I have a couple of questions for you or Tim. When, when it's when a house is going up for sale, there needs to be an inspection of their laterals and their tank. Do we charge for just an inspection?
Yes, we do. That is called a real estate transaction, and that fee is $300.
So were those figures in your, in your revenue report?
Yes.
And, but they don't show up on on your numbers as far as permits that we receive. That's, it's $300 to go out there, pull the lid. The homeowner has to evacuate the tank. The homeowner has to make access, open the thing up, and our inspector comes out and does a visual of the tank to make sure that it's intact, and for that, they pay $300?
Correct. There's a little bit more that goes into it just than that, but you are correct. So anytime a real estate transaction is requested, the tank does have to be pumped, and our staff goes out there and does a thorough inspection, not only of the tank, but also takes a look at all the lateral lines and make sure everything is functioning properly. And usually, that's more of a requirement for any type of loan. And we do have, there are some private sale-type things, transactions that do happen that real estate transactions don't occur. But most of the time, it's when somebody is purchasing a home as part of a loan process that the loan requires for an inspection. But typically, it's what is in our code is what is required for any type of transaction of reality for those to be inspected.
Okay, and Commissioner Vidrickson touched on the fact that there might be some moonlighting, septic tanks being swapped out, that no permit was, and Tim touched upon what possibly could happen. Have we had any of those instances that we've gone out, and I guess the only time you would know that is if a sale took place? And, and our record showed it had a thousand-gallon tank, and they go out and inspect, and it's a 1,500-gallon tank. Well, it didn't grow. Something had to happen. Have we had that happen, and if so, what, how was that handled?
I believe it happens, and it's, it's just a, it's one of those things, it depends on actually when it happened. As I said, if we can determine it happened fairly recently, then, you know, then it would, or from a previous owner or something. It's handled, you know, kind of on a case-by-case basis, I should say. We have, if I'm correct, as I said, they have, there are property owners that will do things kind of in the dark there, and we won't find out about it until the real estate transaction takes place, and then we have mechanisms in place to kind of mitigate that. Usually, we want to find out if it's the, you know, the previous owner had done that, or if the current owner that's selling the property, you know, did it. Because a lot of times, you'll have people who will, you know, if the transaction was like 10 or 15 years ago, and the previous owner had put something in, and the person who currently owns it is selling it, and that previous owner put it in, then we, you know, there's not a whole lot we can do other than just try to work with the current owner in terms of trying to resolve the discrepancy there.
Well, I question, this thing's starting to grow. I question the $300 fee on just an inspection. I guess there is some documentation that takes place. But it's just a visual. There's no mapping, there's no, and to actually assess a lateral line is, if it's wet, then there's a problem, but other than that, you don't know what's going on underground or how many feet of laterals there are. So it's just actually the septic tank that is actually being looked at or that could actually be looked at. And I don't know, I'm getting more questions, I'm asking myself more questions than I'm getting answers, I guess.
Well, the laterals, I mean, we usually, when, what happens is when someone comes in for a new system, though, we'll usually require them to to give us a diagram showing, you know, and usually we, we keep those on record. And to the best of our knowledge, that's how we handle all of these, those types of new systems going in. Now, if there's a change or whatever that's, that occurs, somebody does something kind of, illegally or whatever, as I said, there's, like I said, we won't usually find out about it until, you know, after the real estate or while the real estate transaction is taking place. Thank you.
Commissioner Vidrickson, again, it seems to me like somewhere along the line, we need to somehow or another hold the plumber responsible here somehow or another. I know if a contractor here in the city or somewhere goes out and starts building a house without a permit, I mean, they're subject to some issues, I can assure you. I don't, we obviously don't have anything on the books regarding that, so maybe that's an avenue we need to kind of look at too.
Well, I've started doing that in Dickinson County for zoning issues, contractors, and these are usually, we don't, I don't, my department doesn't deal with septics, but as I said, we, for building permits, usually what I do is if a contractor builds a house, starts building a house, and they haven't pulled a permit yet, I usually will, I have ways of finding out who's actually doing it, you know, who the contractor is, and I can usually tag them down and track them down and have them all usually know, because there's not very many builders around, so I can, I can pretty much find out who it is that's not pulling a building permit. I don't know what it's like here, you know, how many, you know, as far as the number of plumbers and stuff that these guys deal with, but I think there's a way that you can address, you know, and hold, you can hold a contractor accountable, because contractors, to my knowledge, know, you know, they know what's required as well as, you know, because a lot of times, the homeowner may not, but the contractor for sure does if they're licensed.
I'll go back to a comment that Commissioner Reese made, somewhere or another in here, I think our answer is going to be a differentiation between a new system and just an inspection. A difference in the fees. I don't, I don't know if that's possible or if it is necessary, but that seems to be where the the issue with the constituents is, is somebody comes out for, and just, you know, overlooks it and gets charged 300 bucks. I'm just guessing, I don't know, I haven't been out and looked at them. So, any rate.
Commissioner White here. Question time. I don't know who gets to answer it or if they even can, but my question is, and I understand there's a lot of variables, but what is the cost of the average homestead rural Celine County sewage install?
So typically, for a brand-new septic system for somebody that is building a house, it can be anywhere from $6,000 to $8,000, depending on the complexity of it, what types of materials that they utilize, plumbers, contractor fees, et cetera. But that's typically what we see.
Okay, and I'm looking at a $300 permit for inspection, a fee that is basically an insurance policy. It looks like a cheap investment to me.
Mr. Chair, this is County Administrator Phil Smith-Haines. I think it really comes back to what the commission desires. I mean, staff could do a whole lot of work and break this down you know, twenty different ways. If the commission desires that level of detail and would like us to pursue that, we certainly can. But it kind of, you know, it's really kind of a policy decision for the commission. At the end of the day, are you wanting to cost-recover the full amount of what we are spending to do these inspections? Or do you really want to have a fee that you think is reasonable in consideration of neighboring jurisdictions, sort of what the market will bear, and you know, and we would effectively subsidize a little bit of that fee through other revenues. And that, that's really the, the question that this comes down to. And so we could, we could certainly, you know, perform an exhaustive, you know, time study, track, you know, how much time it takes to drive to the average inspection and how, you know, that there are all those costs that could potentially be, and could be in it. But we want to make sure that we're providing the commission information that's actionable for you, that you actually can, can take to make a decision.
And this is Commissioner Sparks, and, and I've lived in rural Celine County for over 40 years. And just in the last, oh, probably four years, we've had three of my neighbors out where I live have had to have new septic tanks put in. And I just, I want to commend our, our planning zoning, our, our helpers out there that are pertain to this $300 fee. To me, it's one of them situations where a lot of these people, it's like, almost like they're doing the engineering of this project. Yeah, they have these plumbers that do septic tanks that know how to do it, do this. But these guys come out and make sure that this is all done right. And it's like, we just hired here a consultant here to manage our installation over at the Expo Center, a manager of, of doing some work. And that's, I look at it as that, that's what's going on here is that these employees are, are going out. They're first telling the consumer that yes, hey, this, this has not been replaced in 40 years. Yes, you're going to have to put in a new septic tank, whether it's even been working. All of a sudden, it's like we have these people out here that, I know like myself, you have people that have been there for all these years that retired there. And, and their, their house and their septic tanks works fine when you have one or two people live there. Now you have a house full of four kids coming in. Things change a little bit and you have, that all has to come into play. I, the, the $300 to me is just a, a, a part of doing the business on the, on that side of it to making sure that what is there is going to function right for that family. So I, I, I don't have an issue with the $300 at all. But that's just my intake line. Thank you. Any other comments?
Commissioner Vidrickson, and, and I've been listening to this and, and thinking about it and deciphering it. I've heard it from constituents. Commissioner White brought up a, a good point in terms of the percentage of cost to the home itself. And, and listening to, to our administrator, and now he takes this apart. It doesn't look like we're out of line, I guess, after all. I mean, I was certainly, I'm still on the side of the constituents. But $300 doesn't seem to be an inordinate amount of money for the service that we're going through. And what it, the, as, as you, I think one of the commissioners said, the insurance policy on your septic system. So I, I, that, I'll leave it at that, I guess.
Okay. Well, thank you for your, your information there, Mr. Vidrickson. Any other comments?
I'm okay with everything as, appreciate the information that shows that we are in line with other places. And that's kind of what I wanted to hear.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you all for your input. Next item.
Item number four, planning and zoning update with Tim Hamilton, planning and zoning administrator.
Good morning, Tim.
Good morning. Good morning again. The, this is my, my, I, I do an annual review. I try to give a kind of a, a review of what the pre, the whole previous year and where we're at, you know, up to, you know, year to date in 21. And so the planning board back in last year, I said, we held five public hearings to consider basically five conditional use permit applications and two transfer of development rights. In November of last year, the planning board stated, started the update process for the comprehensive plan by considering language recommended by the Fort Riley to Smokey Hill unmanned aircraft study to be included in chapter four, section nine of the county plan. As you can see, under the item one, which is the table for new construction, we had residential homes in 2020 were 14. And so far, since January 1st of this year, we've had one, one new home. The replacement homes broken down is we had one replacement home last year, four residential additions, 34 accessory structures, three commercial projects. And, and that, that would include adding, you know, cell towers and adding a new cell tower dish. And so that comes to a total of 60 permits that we had last year for planning and zoning. And a year to date, we've had a total of seven. So as far as what we have plans for in the future, the planning board conducted its first public hearing via Zoom in January, and it was a success. Staff will continue to schedule Zoom meetings open to the public as the COVID-19 situation warrants. The planning board does intend to continue pursuing the comprehensive plan update through 2021, though limited to in-person hearings as health safety conditions will allow. The budget update for us kind of going, kind of touching on a little of what Hannah spoke about earlier, which was our total revenue in 2020 was $92,680 and broken down, that's $4,950 for zoning, $87,730 for environmental services. And revenue year to, year to date for 21 is, and this is since January 31st, I believe it is, $9,000 total. That would be $500 for zoning fees and $8,500 for environmental services. And so that's, that basically breaks down last year and kind of where we're at at this point.
Okay. Well, thank you, Tim. We'll keep it busy for this year, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Any other comments by commissioners?
This Commissioner White, another question. Could you give us a brief overview, Tim, in regards to TDRs, transfer development rights and, and the process for those and the, the meanings behind it?
Okay, transfer of development rights is a, a mechanism that Celine County has, has included to assist those individuals that have, because we discourage development in a flood plain. There are some development rights that might be in a flood plain that we're trying to, you know, discourage anyone from developing. And so usually we give the option of allowing that property owner that has the, the, that development right to sell that development right to, or transfer that development right to another property that would like to, to build. And so sometimes, a lot of times, these, the, the, the receiving property doesn't necessarily have to be 80 acres. I mean, we've historically, because the, the way it's supposed to work is you have one building right for every 80 acres. And, but as long as it is a legal split, as I said, you can, you can transfer one development right to a, a property, provided that there's no other primary residential structures or no, no, no other housing on there. In that case, they would have to split that particular parcel in half to, to allow that one development right that they're transferring from the flood plain into this other parcel before they, we would allow a building permit to be issued.
I see. Do you have any idea what the value of a transfer development right is?
The, the value of the right, as far as the, 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 the cost on it. Okay. I have, I do not know. It's, it's based on whatever, whatever the market value is for, for the, the going rate is. I, I have no idea what that would be. That's, that's, you know, a Realtor would probably know better than I would as to what, how much those go for. But usually we, we don't find out about it until somebody says, hey, I'd like to do a transfer of development rights. By then it's, it's already a done deal. So.
I see. Okay. I appreciate that info. And could you give us a brief overview, overview in regards to the, the four cell towers?
Okay, the, the cell towers that went in, this was from, the provider was Nextlink. And they've, they've got two that went up that required conditional use permit. And those two conditional use permits were approved. And then the, you had one additional that we had here in Celine County last year that went in on a, I believe it was on, in, I believe it was from Brookville on a silo that was existing. So they didn't have to go through a conditional use permit on that because it was already, you know, they were, they were, it already had, was on a structure that was high enough to, and that's why, why we do the conditional use permits is to, you know, assure that the ice is, you know, so if it's a new tower, it'll go through a conditional use permit. But if they want to put on a si- put it on a silo, our regulations allow them to do that without having to go through the conditional use. The other tower that's coming up is going to be in April. And that will go through the plan, the planning board in April, the April, first meeting in April. And then have, once that's done, that's, that's all we have so far. I mean, I've got two other ones that I'm dealing with from that same company, that Nextlink in Dickinson County. And so I'm, you'll have to forgive me, sometimes I get the two confused because I'm, I'm dealing with all, all three. I'm dealing with the one in April here. And then I've got two others next month in, in, in Dickinson County, so from the same company. So, so that's, that's where we're at right now, the, this, the, the. And I asked, I asked Nextlink, I said, what's, what's your status as far as, you know, the next several months? Are you, is this going to be the last tower you put up, you know, for, in Celine County? They said, they said, yeah, for now. So, but I, I just, we'll, we'll wait and see what happens. These things tend to, you know, kind of creep up on us and we won't, we're usually the last ones to know that they're, they're planning anything because they never let us know. So, but, but that's it. April is going to be this, for the fourth one that's, that's going to be going up and, and so that's, that's, that's all I got on it so far. So.
All righty. I appreciate the info.
Oh, no problem.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any comments or questions? Okay. Go to next item.
Item number five, commissioners' comments.
Any comments by commissioners? Next item.
Item number six, announcement.
Don't have any announcements. Is there any announcements by any other commissioners? Any other business? No further business. Celine County Board of Commissioners meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.